Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Select Board, it being September 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. The meeting has been properly posted, and before we review the agenda, I'll ask everyone who is able to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the world of riches and lands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
So, good evening. I'm Shelby Marshall, Vice Chair of the Select Board. Ian Johnson is available tonight. He is our Chair, so I'll be filling in that duty. So, this is a hearing to, excuse me, a public information and input session regarding a proposed article regarding a home rule petition to see basically if the Select Board would be petitioning the General Court to increase the number of signatures required from 10 to 50 for any citizen's petition. That's the summary of it. A copy of the proposed article has been made available. If you need extra copies, there are some up here. Patrick Welch will keep time for me. We're going to start with two minutes per person, just to make sure we have enough time for everyone in the room. If you feel like your comments, you didn't have enough time for those, just ask you to take a seat, and then as we cycle back through, you'll have an opportunity to come back up. But just want to give everyone a chance. I appreciate the public for being here. This is an in-person meeting, so there's no remote participation. And with that, the format will be that we'll receive comments from the public, and after all comments are received, if Board members want to comment based on what they heard or their own views, we'll open it up at that time. Okay? All right. And when you do come to the podium, please, for us, for the audience, please have the microphone pretty close to your mouth, state your name and your address, and we'd love to hear from you. So, thank you so much for attending. All right? So, I'm just going to kind of sweep the room, and I'll kind of go back and forth, so we don't sort of say, oh, she's only looking at this side. So, and to keep it moving, the gentleman here in the front, are you here to make comments? Come on up.
West Church, 1 Baldwin Court. Just wondering why the number of signatures was kept so low? We have wasted hours of town meeting time in the past two meetings over essentially nonsense that got on because of the low number of signatures. If something's important enough to bring before the entire town to vote on at a town meeting, there should be a much higher bar, so that the people's time are spent on something meaningful. I would say something perhaps as much as 2% of the registered voters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to respond to that, Kristi?
Sure. Just in terms of the number being 10, that's in state law, and so we didn't have anything different than that in our current charter. So, we would have had to bring it to town meeting in order to get that raised, which is what we're proposing to do now. But it was based on the Massachusetts state law.
Can I call it?
Yep.
Are you talking about the 50 that we're proposing? Okay, so that was proposed, do you want to answer that? That was proposed because Weston was already successful in petitioning the legislature for a threshold of 50, and we were concerned, we're proposing 50, but we're not adverse to a different number. But one of the arguments was that it's proven to get through, whereas 200 or 2% would be possibly more difficult to get through General Court.
Okay. If you're, yep, there are agendas and handouts right here, right here in the corner. Okay, great. Working to my left, Mr. Savoy, would you like to come up?
I'm all set.
You're all set for now? Okay, going back. Walter? And apologize, I know some of your names, not all of them, so we'll just make eye contact as we go.
Okay. Walter Leslie, 207 West Main Street. To be clear, I am not speaking on behalf of the Advisory Finance Committee tonight, and because this may be a warrant article, I actually am not going to speak in favor or against the article, other than I want to speak in favor of you putting it on the warrant. And so, I appreciate you doing so, because I think then we could have a good discussion on it at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Sir in the blue shirt, come on up.
Indrick Butler, 17 Hart Street. I believe this can only impact the annual town meeting. It can't impact a special meeting because of the state regulations. So, I'm not sure that's what this says.
Okay. Kristi?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
It is intended to only have an impact at the annual town meeting. The Board or the town further could ask to change the requirement for the special town meeting, but that's a much higher threshold currently. It does refer to a section of the charter that only speaks to the annual town meeting, which is why, even though it doesn't say specifically, when you make the amendments that are being proposed, it would only apply to annual.
Yes. Are we asking our state representatives to try to change the law for special town meetings, so that we aren't impacted with these frivolous warrants at special town meetings? Because I'd be totally in favor of changing this.
Is the special town meeting threshold 10, or is it higher?
10.
No, the annual is 10. The special is 100.
Special is 100.
Right. The special town meeting's 100. The annual town meeting in the spring is only 10.
Right.
Oh, you're correct, yes. Unless this has changed since what I, Selectmen shall insert in the warrant for the annual meeting, all subjects, the insertion of which shall be requested of them in writing by 10 or more registered voters of the town.
That's eight.
So, I'm not sure how we can even do this with that legislation in place.
So, that's the challenge that we've had, is we don't have anything specific in our charter, so we have to follow what you just read, the state law. As I think you mentioned, Weston was successful in having a charter change that actually superseded that law.
So, there's a provision in the law that allows a charter to supersede this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, if that answers.
Thank you. Okay, sweeping back on my right, Mr. Corningfield. Yep. And you can always come back around if not, if you're not, okay, wait, all right, moving to the left. Nope. Okay, move to the right. Yep, come on up. Appreciate that we can kind of help self-manage the room here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Norah Wallace. I live on 22 Moore Street. I guess I have a couple of questions. One, we're always comparing to Weston. Weston is a very different town than Westboro, and I'm not quite sure what they had in their past to force them to have this change in their town. We know what we went through these last past couple of years, and I think there's enough appetite that we definitely need to do more than 50. And I think there's, there may be a sweet spot between 50 and 2% of electorate. I mean, how many people are actually registered voters in Westboro? 11,000 some?
I believe it's, I thought it was closer to, our town clerk is here.
Oh, hello. Hi. So, we're rising about 14,000. Oh, perfect. So, I mean, 14,000, we can't possibly fit 14,000 in the high school, obviously. That's a whole nother topic that we can all have later on. But definitely, I think a 50 is a really low threshold, and I think 50 is really easy to get. I have a large family. I can get them just like that. I think we really need to ought to think a little bit higher, and not, I understand about the Weston why, how they did it, to be on the safe side. But I think in this town, with what we lived, I think we are pretty safe to go at least 100 or 200, or possibly even 400. So, I would like to just possibly entertain that thought. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Savoy?
Wilford Savoy, 41 Chestnut Street. I would, I think I heard one of the reasons for putting this in was to limit frivolous articles coming into the Board. Certainly, we can all understand that, but of course, one person's frivolous article is the same person's serious article. So, we have that. The town meeting also, at the last meeting, limited the amount of time to, I think it was two or three minutes of non-binding, on non-binding articles. So, that restricted discussion on those types of articles. So, we, you know, this is the second step that is being taken to, in effect, reduce the voter's voice. So, you could, you can look at it that way. But that was taken, that restriction on discussion was passed at the last meeting. And I would just mention that I have filed two petitions, which I'm sure the Board is going to be taking up at a later date, which would expand the opportunity for voters to participate on the ballot. And I'll only say that. I do have signature pages here, if anyone wants to sign up. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Andy Kenningsburg, 3 Smith Street. I am in favor of this, because I think if people want to do citizens' petitions, they should be doing it for serious reasons. I have looked back, for other reasons, I've looked back through town meeting warrants over the last decade. One of the citizens' petitions was for putting up radar-controlled speed limit, flashing signs in a neighborhood where there was excessive speeding. If you increase to over 50 signatures, you're going to have, and there's a neighborhood who needs something, then they're going to have to work much harder to convince people to sign a petition to put it on the warrant, whereas you have an entire neighborhood, couple of dozen homes, you get 50 signatures, and a neighborhood is concerned about something can get that considered by town meeting on the warrant. Serious warrant article, for example, as I just discussed, which was brought up several years ago. I don't think that the voters' free speech rights are being diminished by changing this requirement. Anybody can put up a soapbox in the front of the Rotary and, you know, make their statement in public, but the town legislative process should be for serious legislative issues, and that's why I'm for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Robert Gilmore, 35 Water Street. I've heard the word, you know, I've heard the word frivolous said multiple times, and in my mind, I don't think of it as frivolous. I think of it as, I would like to see warrant articles that have some broad public support, and have a serious opportunity of being passed. So, I don't think of it, oh, as, oh, this is a joke, this is meaningless, this is serious. I think of it as, oh, yeah, someone has put in a lot of effort, and has some broad support from the community in order to make this happen. Now, what that number is, 500, 2%, whatever, you know, I have opinions on that, but I trust the Board. The other thing is, I have a question, a procedural question. I have no idea if it's appropriate. I did see that the moderator is here. So, I do have a question about that, if I may ask it.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Moderator, would, in your opinion, would this be subject to sort of the same rules that we use for financial things, where if there were multiple amendments, we would start at the top and work our way down? Or how do you think that would work?
So, just for clarification, do you mean this particular article as it's, as it's put in?
Yes, when this article goes before the town meeting.
Okay, yep. John, if you can, thanks.
John Arnold, 251 West Main Street, Moderator. In terms of, are you saying, like, if somebody proposes 500, 400, 300, or whatever, the bylaw we have essentially says, for dollar amounts, we start at the top, and then for time, we start at longest and go to shortest. I would say probably in the spirit of this, if there were multiple amendments, just because the whole purpose of that article is just to not have confused with jumping from like 200 down to 50 up to 125, I would most likely just start at the high number and go until there's a majority, or until everything fails similar to that. So, it's a good point. I don't think the bylaw requires that, but in terms of procedurally not confusing voters about having numbers dropped over, that's likely the way I would handle it, if there were multiple competing numbers.
Do you want to add something?
Thank you.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to this side. Nope, you're all set. Okay, yep, just kind of, we're going to go kind of in order here. Just the woman behind, nope, anyone else here on the right side? Yep, you ready? Go ahead, come on up. Just so we don't have everyone kind of rushing, and then we're doing some awkward dance at the microphone, although it might be interesting for, you know, Westboro TV.
Susan McGallas, 23 Elm Street. I also believe that the amount of signatures required should be increased. Sitting through that last meeting was painful, and I don't know how anybody else feels. And yes, other people have the right to put their petitions in, and I understand that, and it's not rejecting voters at all. All it's doing is requiring more signatures, so that some of the things that will not get passed, and we know won't get passed, won't happen. All I have is.
Okay, thank you. Before we take someone else from the audience, I do want to just acknowledge that Joanne Aramini of Seven Metal Road submitted written comments to the Board regarding changes to the process. There were several questions asked, some references to prior town meetings, the number of citizens' petitions, and essentially the summary of it is that she feels like the process was followed, and making change is not the right thing to do. So, those will be part of the public record and available for those who want to read it. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. Okay, working back to this side. Michael, do you want to speak? You don't have to, I just, yep, come on up.
Hello, everyone. Mike Karp, 11 Peters Farm Way. I think it's important to keep in mind that the number of folks who stay at the town meeting changes over the course of the day. And by the end of the day, we're down to perhaps 15 to 20%, and that's just a very rough estimate, of 50 to 20% of total number of people who have attended the meeting. And it's, of that 20%, what you'll notice is that the demographic has changed. There are fewer young women, specifically younger women with children, and presumably, in many households, that also means there are fewer male parents of children. So, I think that if we can eliminate the length of the meeting by cutting out some of these frivolous warrant drafts, it will actually get a greater number of people voting on the substantive issues. And I think we'll get folks home in a more reasonable hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, working back, next row. Anyone want to speak on this side? Don't be shy. Come on. Don't be shy. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jeff Levine, six Squail Hollow. I am very much in support of the proposed change to the bylaws. I find it wholly inappropriate for ten voters to hold the entire town hostage at a town meeting. I think it is very reasonable to ask that at least fifty voters approve of a, of a topic to bring before the voters. If a, if a topic is worth presenting to the voters, then there might, there ought to be at least fifty people who are interested in it before it comes to the voters. To suggest that only ten people are interested in it is unreasonable to bring before the town meeting. So I think asking for at least fifty voters to sign on to a petition is quite reasonable to, to bring before the town. So I very much approve of the proposed change.
Thank you. I think it may be worth noting, just procedurally, for those of you that don't follow our meetings on a regular basis, that procedurally, with a citizen's petition, we accept that language as it's presented by the petitioner, and it goes on the warrant as it is. Our town manager, our moderator, they do have conversations typically with the petitioners to kind of work through the process. Petitioners are always encouraged to come before this board, finance committee, other relevant boards, that, you know, anytime you can gain support before the meeting, we all know how that goes, before town meeting, that typically ensures a greater success rate. But they, those petitioners are, at a minimum, asked to come before the select board, before the town meeting or annual town meeting or special town meeting. So I did want to just make sure you knew that so there is a chance, at least for this board, to hear that. Anyone else want to add to that comment? Okay. On this side, gentleman in the dark green, no, not calling anyone out, just making sure. Okay, moving. Next to you, Mr. Levine. No. Okay. Lady in the cream. Nope. Okay. The Bill Linane, Mr. Linane, I saw you stand up. Thank you. You know you're in trouble when you get called out by name. So for those of you that aren't getting called out by name, you're lucky now.
Bill Linane, twenty-one Deerfield Ave. I do support the article, and my understanding is that many towns in the Commonwealth do have petitions with ten, but there's only one town so far that has a requirement of fifty. So to go above the fifty, although I'd like to see it, it may hold us up getting an approval. So to get a foot in the door to get started might be worth it. Also, I think the petitions are good, as I think Andy pretty well summarized the need for certain ones. And I also reflect on the other gentleman saying that, although it was painstaking, my recollection, there were two hundred and fifty to three hundred people that stayed through the meeting to defeat the articles that were frivolous. So I think you're accommodating all the people in the community by proceeding like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else back here? Come on up.
Brian Cormier, fifteen Kings Grant Road. I strongly support this, and I thank you for bringing it forward. I think, I echo Mr. Karp's comments that, you know, part of the problem is that that meeting gets to be so long, there's so many warrants, it does get to be intimidating. Devil's advocate a little bit is that this will be an emotionally charged issue for that group, group of people that did keep putting those ten signing warrants through. So I want to be careful on kind of how it's framed in discussions. That's all I kind of caution, is that while I vehemently agree that they are frivolous, they are definitely some frivolous things, the townie baby warrant brought about public embarrassment. I mean, statewide, that was reported on. So we do have to be careful, but I want to maybe, like, frame the conversation as in, like, normalizing the number. If, using the fourteen thousand number we had tonight, we're talking about going to point four percent of the voting population. So we're kind of normalizing the number. I don't, I just want to be careful as we call that frivolous, because we will charge that group when we talk about what they're bringing forward as frivolous. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Gentlemen in the back. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Joshua Gordon, thirty-three West Street, and I just also would like to add my support of Mr. Karp's comments. And I think it would actually, by encouraging a younger demographic to be able to stay longer in the meeting, I think that's really increasing participation. So I think fifty votes is a good start. I would even support more.
Okay. Is there anyone here that has not spoken yet that would like an opportunity to do so? Yep, come on up.
John Arnold, two fifty-one West Main Street, moderator. Again, I don't take public positions on things. I just want to clarify my comments, and I'll thank Mr. Leslie for reminding me. In terms of what motions are acceptable, there's typically the concept of scope, is whether the town has been warned about what may happen. And so when I was talking about if we started at four hundred, three hundred, two hundred, whatever, I did note that the wording right now says changing from ten to fifty. And although based on this conversation, I don't know if I would expect people to make amendments for a higher number, but it would make my job easier if the select board would like to entertain, perhaps suggest the number, but entertain whether the voters would like to go higher, regardless of risks or not, if you, if you wanted to put in the article or some, some other number as the voters approve. Because that would totally answer the question of whether I would allow a five hundred or a four hundred to be essentially addressed as a motion. Right now, my tendency is that I would allow it, but I need to do a little more thinking about that, because I wouldn't, as the gentleman, as a couple of people suggested, if it's emotionally charged, I don't want the meeting to be put in a position to say, sorry, the article only says fifty and we have to go there. So I'm, I'm wrestling with that in my mind, but one way to fix that would be like we do or such other amount. We could say or such other number as the voters approve. And that would absolutely open it up, or we could do a what do the voters want. Although I understand that part of the voter's job and your job is to figure out what's the level of risk of having the legislature approve or disapprove. So I just wanted to add that extra mode of clarity that I hadn't thought about when I first answered the question.
Potentially one of the few times that voters would vote for a bigger number.
Can I ask John a question? John, while we got you up there, can I ask you a question?
From Patrick, and then we'll go back.
So there was a comment earlier in regards to the change in the process or the timing of allowed comments at town meeting as a result of these petition articles in the recent years. Can you remind us, I guess, a little bit of the history of how you manage town meeting in regards to time? I remember eight, ten years ago, I would get only like two or three minutes.
It's changed over time. Since I've been moderator, which is almost twelve years, we've typically gone between two and three minutes per speech, and any organized group for or against can give a ten-minute presentation. The two times we've limited that, or two, I think it's two, maybe three, times we've limited is for articles that are deemed to be non-binding on the town. We've had a number of the articles that people have addressed indirectly tonight were articles for which the town meeting did not have authority to act. The town meeting cannot tell select board what to do. They can't tell the school committee or the board of health what to do. They can't tell the library what trustees what to do. Those are essentially non-binding sort of sense of the meeting. So the, the rule of the meeting that we've passed at the last two annual town meetings have been told the voters for any article that is deemed to be non-binding, which means the town meeting doesn't have the authority to do what it's asking to do. We've had the town, I've had the town vote on, the voters vote on whether they would like to reduce the amount of time, and that's when we've had a fifteen-minute limit on each side or a ten-minute limit, and then a two or two-and-a-half-minute limit per, per speech. And then we've actually done that time limit. But this article is something that the town meeting can do, so this isn't one of those. And again, it's only been articles that through discussions with town council and myself have been, we've only limited it to things which are simply advisory or a sense of the meeting, or things where the town meeting could not actually compel or direct an action to be taken. Other than that, it's the usual two, two-and-a-half minutes per person, ten minutes for presentation, and then we go until people want to stop talking or until someone moves to terminate debate after there's been a reasonable amount of debate on each side.
Thank you, John.
Yep, you're welcome.
I saw two hands up. We'll start here and then move it around. Yep.
Wilford Savoy, forty-one Chestnut Street. Maybe John mentioned it, but does this article require a majority vote to pass at town meeting?
I believe, I believe so. I believe it is, but.
I believe so.
Yes, the answer is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Great question. Bye.
Narai Wallace, twenty-two Moore Street. When I left and all the people that were around me left the town meetings the last couple of years, we felt like the process was a joke. And I don't think it was a joke. I thought it was a very important process. Democracy is being served and lived through our town meetings. And I feel increasing the number of signatures to maybe fifty or even more will legitimize again the town meetings, where people feel that serious issues are being, again, discussed, pros and cons, and finally to be voted on, which is we, the best way that we can run our, our town and our democracy. So it will definitely legitimize again for the, the people of Westboro, the town meetings, and what is the importance of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so just, I know you just, you're welcome to call on up. We're limiting comments to two minutes. Come on up. Yep, yep. Name, you know, you know the drill. Thank you.
Even wrote it out.
Awesome, thank you.
Carolyn Spring, Deerfield Lane.
Yep.
First, thank you for having a public hearing on this. I think the amount of signatures should be increased to one hundred, not just fifty. Reason being that it'll make it consistent with the annual town meeting, which requires one hundred signatures on a citizen's petition, just to keep it uniform. The other reason is the one hundred signatures out of fourteen thousand one hundred registered voters is less than one percent. Actually, it's point oh seven percent, which is not a lot of people, when you think about it, to require them to have to be in favor of a petition rather than just ten, which would be point zero zero seven, I think, free to correct my math. We would also, by requiring the one hundred signatures, it lets it know that it'd be something that's serious to be considered, that enough citizens want to have us, have the board and the town meeting think about it. The other thing is, we won't have to waste time talking about things and issues over which the town meeting has no authority. And that was kind of one of the biggest annoyances for me, is that we don't have any authority over curriculum, for example. DESI does. So why are we even bothering to talk about it and wasting everybody's time? So just respectfully request that one hundred signatures be the amount that be required for citizens' petitions for the special town meeting in the fall, making it consistent and also more important and more germane to the town itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn to fellow board members if you want to add comments or thoughts or responses. Yep.
Yeah, I just, first of all, wanted to note that we got an email last week from Susan Krantz at Four Chestnut, expressing her support for the change in signatures to fifty to a hundred. She couldn't make it here tonight, so. I'm torn on this. I, I know I have run for office a few times now, and I had to get fifty signatures to get on the ballot. And part of me likes, you know, the consistency of fifty, but part of me feels like it wasn't really that hard to get fifty signatures. I just walked around my neighborhood and some people didn't know if they were registered, but I had them sign anyway, so. But, did you know about that? Well, that's why you get seventy. But I think I had seventy or eighty, and I don't remember it being that hard. You know, the campaigning was hard, but not the signature part. So I feel like a higher threshold does make sense to me. I'm concerned about it getting through the legislature, so the fifty makes sense from that standpoint. But I've expressed this before, that I would rather see it be a percentage that changes with time. As our number of registered voters go, grows, so does the number of petition signatures. Someday, fifty may be too low. I also do want to make it attainable for, you know, the idea of five hundred seems too high to me, because there are times when petitions are not frivolous or, you know, I think we're all frustrated at the number of non-binding referendums that are not only impossible, but possibly illegal to enact, but I would rather err on the side of caution with it, in the sense that I don't want somebody to feel like they can't do a citizen petition because the threshold is too high. So, in other words, I haven't made up my mind.
Okay. John?
I'm sorry, one more thing. John, for those of you who know me, two minutes is nowhere near enough time for someone to speak.
We, we actually said one and a half.
Thank you.
We told you one and a half, but we didn't just, we didn't tell you, actually.
No, thank you very much, and sorry I was late this evening, so I did miss a couple of speakers. But, yeah, I, I, I'm definitely in agreement that we need to raise the number of signatures. I guess my concern is, we're not here to eliminate citizens' petitions, right? We're here to sort of ensure that they are petitions that are worthy of the town's consideration. And so unfortunately, I would love to say, you know, why don't we just have no non-binding petitions? If it's not under the authority of the town, then we shouldn't bother. But unfortunately, that ability, we don't have that ability. We can't choose what is presented in front of us. So I guess what we're trying to do here, in my mind, is make it difficult that these really need to be issues that they feel the town, or worthy of the town, and that actually have some chance of passing, right? Are you not going to spend that amount of time to get signatures to get something that's going to get, you know, three percent of town individuals to vote for? So my hope is that fifty is enough, because I don't want to see citizens' petitions eliminated entirely. But I understand everybody's frustration because I agree with it. So thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you. Sean?
Sure, I'll make a few comments. So I do believe that there is something that needs to be done. I think we need to modernize this up to today's kind of needs, and I think that an increase is due. And I'm glad to see that, you know, we're not the first ones possibly through this hoop with the state, with Weston, having already done it, and set a precedence that we should be able to hopefully work, maneuver through as well as a town. I guess a couple of comments in regards to some of the feedback we got tonight. So first of all, thank you very much for everyone coming tonight and providing your thoughts and your feedback. Hugely important that we hear from you all and take your comments into consideration as we decide what the article will be, because the end, it's a starting point for town meeting to have that discussion. And just like we're saying, petitioners should have vetted their article, we're essentially doing that with you all tonight to vet it before we put it on the warrant. I will just say, there are some other options that I didn't hear tonight, other possible, I'll say nuances to how things could be done, that I'll just throw out there that I'm thinking about, which the board may decide to consider or not consider. For example, we've talked about binding or non-binding. And my question, I do have a question for Kristi on this. What is the process to determine a binding versus a non-binding article, and is that a burdensome process?
I think you're, the moderator's probably best situated to respond, only because he typically works with the petitioner more directly. But it's typically non-binding when it's an action that town meeting can't take. So as John mentioned earlier, town meeting can't tell the school committee to do certain things, can't tell the select board to do certain things.
Well, what I'm getting to is, who makes that determination? Is it our moderator? Is it town council? How do we come to that determination?
So it's the petitioner. It's the petitioner that crafts the article and, and writes non-binding in it or not. I assume that's through working with John. Ultimately, town council would weigh in on what's binding or non-binding.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a little more nuanced than that. I mean, I, the-
I mean, I, the, right now, the petitioners have, in many cases, have included non-binding. I haven't made them do it. Nobody can make them do it. I rely on speaking to town council with Christie and then make the determination. But again, the determination that I made wasn't whether it's on the warrant or not, which is your decision. It's whether we were going to apply that limitation on the amount of time to speak if the voters give that. So I rely on essentially the, either it's, the wording is in the article, in which case I believe it. And if it isn't in the article, I would confer with town council with Christie's approval to say, can you show me an example in the law that says where they could or couldn't do that? And so far, people have been able to say, here's the law that says town meeting can't do this. Like, okay, so whether it says non-binding or not, it is non-binding.
Right, and I'm not looking to solve this problem in regards to the wording, saying, you know, actually forcing the wording to be on the article, just how that determination is made. Because one of the things that we've heard, and to Mark's point, we've received a number of emails over the last two years in regards to this topic. We only shared, I think, a few, but certainly we've gotten a number of them. And one of the things is about, hey, this is non-binding. So why are we taking so much time on it? It's not town business. So I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity, and again, this is just free thinking here. Is there an opportunity in the language that we put forth to the state legislature to say we would have a difference between a non-binding article and a binding article? Therefore, you create the restriction, I won't say restriction, the increase on the articles that are, as some folks are talking about using the terms frivolous or, you know, not in the interest or capability of the town. Do you put that there and still allow the flexibility for a citizen to, Mr. Koningsberg's example, to come before us and ask for a stop sign and only get ten signatures in their neighborhood because they need a stop sign, which is an important thing, making it easier for them to get it? That's the type of thing, I'm wondering if there's a difference between binding and non-binding and how they could be treated.
Well, again, I'm only speaking from my knowledge. The example of Weston that I found with the help of an intern at the State House, the example that we found was Weston changing it from ten to fifty. That's the only example that I know of where the state legislature changed it. I don't know if other people have tried and failed. I haven't heard that. And I don't know of any example where anybody has tried to put into a bylaw or a charter the difference of binding and non-binding.
Right.
And again, not to throw it back at the select board, but the select board's choice is how they interpret the language of the select board. Shall insert on the warrant all those things. I'm sure there were probably some very, you know, what do we call it, lion-hearted select boards that would essentially say, well, you've done that, but we're not going to put it because we can't do it. But that, of course, invites lawsuits and more spending and more money.
I'm not suggesting in any way...
I'm just saying, that's all that I know.
I just want to be clear here. I'm not suggesting in any way that we would not put an article on the warrant. It's a petition article by law. The board has to put it on the warrant, so there's... I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning whether or not there's a difference in the petition requirement if it's a non-binding article, so that would be determined by you through the process that you just outlined. I don't know if that's possible.
I don't know of any.
It would probably be a conversation.
Again, it's the select board's job to decide what's on the warrant. Once it's on the warrant, I try to act with it in accordance with our town traditions and parliamentary law.
Yeah.
I just, a lot of times, we don't see the warrant, or the petition, until it's complete and has been submitted to the town clerk. So I think that would be an extra step that you would be putting on the petitioner to try to figure out if it's binding or non-binding, and then they might submit a petition that doesn't have the requisite number of signatures because they weren't sure, citizens don't have access to town council directly, so... And we wouldn't make that determination until it got to this point. So I think that that would be tough.
Okay.
I think that's also a piece that's, just sort of, as we talk about percentages, that's another thing that I think would be difficult for a petitioner to know exactly how many signatures were required, because kind of sort of chasing that percentage.
Yeah, I'll just say where I'm standing right now, if the vote were today, I think I would lean towards something around the fifty mark. I think a hundred is a, to Miss Spring's point, I get it entirely, but it, to me, that's pretty burdensome, having to go out and get fifty signatures. Mark was talking about how easy it is. It is, but fifty people, go talk to fifty people and get them to sign a petition. You don't want to make it, I don't think you want to make it so hard that it's difficult for people. You know, some petitions might be by our seniors who can't necessarily get out, and I don't want to prevent them or cause difficulty for them to get something that's important to them on the warrant if necessary, because they can't, their mobility issues or whatnot, right? So there's a balance. I'm not sure what that number is. If I, again, to vote today, I'd probably lean towards fifty. But let me see, if any other questions or comments? Again, thank you very much. I'll look for further comments.
Yeah, so I'll just weigh in here and will be redundant, as is the nature of sort of this whole discussion. So I love when Westboro leads. I just am not in favor of risking leading with a higher number when we have some precedent through another town, that being at fifty. So I'm in favor of fifty. I think that Mark shared fifty is what you need to run for office. I don't think putting a higher threshold on an article to come to town meeting, that, to me, seems, I'm not sure I can wrap my head around that justification. I think the reference to the neighborhood type issue, and I remember the speed signs that came up, and that impacts a lot of people because they drive through that area, but the neighborhood in particular. And so I think fifty, again, is still reasonable and aligns with the fifty. I think we've made some great changes that have been discussed around the amount of time allowed for non-binding articles, and I think that's been an improvement, as was already cited. I think we should continue that. And I do think that, as always, further education around and context, which, you know, is something we can definitely influence, working with our town manager, about what town meeting can and cannot act on is just for context for voters as we tee up those articles, particularly the non-binding ones, may help to kind of tamper the energy in the room and just kind of make it nice and clean of this is non-binding, we're going to give a couple of minutes, let's hear it, and we kind of move forward. I think we have, there are lots of opinions about town meeting. We were talking about we could never host fourteen thousand. Today is not the day for, is open town meeting the right way to go, and so on and so forth. That's for another conversation. But I think what we have in annual town meeting and special town meeting in our format is pretty special. And for those that choose to participate in it, full day, part day, what have you, it is, as we always say, the purest form of democracy. And in this day and age, I certainly treasure that. And I welcome healthy debate and discussion and the opportunity for people to hear each other out. So I don't want to limit that, and so I think fifty is my good number. And the other, Mr. Linane?
Linane, twenty-one Deerfield Way. I came before you recently in open forum requesting that people would consider getting themselves involved in various committees. I think some of these non-binding would potentially go away if people would work through the system, either work with you, work with the town manager, or with various departments and committees. So while not all of those, you certainly can be heard, and I have a tendency of coming before you and others too often. But I think they could learn something, if you will, from what they were going out for a petition. Please have people consider that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate those comments. And I would encourage anyone who is thinking that they want to see a change. Certainly, Ian's not here, but the five of us are always open. Our town manager is open to hearing that, our moderator is accessible. And Lord knows, we have a lot of committees that would welcome thoughts. So we continue to have open doors in our government here in Westboro and exercise them. Get curious about it, and, you know, your idea may just be one that makes a really positive change or maybe even a small one that is positive. All right. Yes, gentleman in the back.
Mark Siegel, sixteen Westminster Way. First off, again, thank you so much for having this conversation and the direction it's going, whatever the outcome is. Two comments. One, number one, I've signed petitions for stop signs and things in other neighborhoods in support of the folks in that neighborhood. The one that I think was discussed was about a cut-through. They made the case to me when I was thinking about signing it that people are cutting through, they're driving quickly. Who doesn't support that in town, right? As an individual, I would support that. So I don't think it has to be just in the neighborhood where you have to convince people. Signing for someone who's running for office is different, I think, than what we're talking about here. I think the other thing is that using a hundred, most people is consistent with the other type of annual town meeting. I think that simplicity is really well, serves you well in trying to explain why we've made it a hundred to try and address people who are going to be challenging this. And then third, I think by making it a hundred and forcing you to go outside of your neighborhood to get the hundred votes proves that this warrant does warrant attention by the town versus being able to address this with just the people in quote, "your neighborhood." And that would make it a more credible and valuable warrant to the town if you could get the support of people outside your quote, "neighborhood." Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Not seeing any other hands raised by the public or members? Anything else?
Yeah, just one more comment. You know, I realize that the signature requirement for candidates is fifty, but there's no, like, budget ramifications to that one, whereas most of the binding warrant articles, not the non-binding, but the binding ones would presumably have some type of budget implication. And I think we have a lot of people in town that spend a lot of time on the budget, and to allow something onto the warrant that might be, might affect that budget and affect many departments, I just, I wonder if maybe it needs to be more stringent than fifty. So I'm, still haven't made up my mind, though.
If I could...
Yep.
And I apologize if this was touched on before I got here. So I understood, it was mentioned of the, I believe it was a flashing sign that came before a town meeting that indicated how fast folks were going. It took ten signatures. And somebody on the board, correct me if I get this wrong, a couple of years later, we had an individual in town whose son was struck on his bicycle near the Rotary. And so she was considering a petition to have a flashing crosswalk, right, by the Rotary, and was working on her citizen's petition, and I think might have spoken with John about it. And then instead ended up, it was recommended to her, maybe she should take it to the ATSC, which is the committee that works on that. And through that route, they supported the article that went before town meeting. That's how that happened, right? So citizens petitions aren't the only mechanism, and I think this also supports, I think, what Mr. Linane said, that working through the process of town committees, you can also manage to get things accomplished at town meeting without actually having to go through the full citizen's petition route. So there are multiple mechanisms. I do, though, my, people are talking about being consistent across both meetings. So technically, the fall meeting is a special town meeting. Like technically, we don't have to have the fall town meeting. We choose to have the fall town meeting every year. The annual town meeting in March is the only one that's required, and that's why it has the lower threshold. So every other meeting's special and is a hundred signatures. So I'm, I don't know that I would say we should make the annual town meeting equivalent to a special town meeting. I would still consider a lower signature total.
I see a hand up. This is probably a nuanced question for Christie. Is there, if we were to pass, let's say, fifty, is there a timeframe in which, and the state legislature approves the home rule, is there an appetite or a timeframe in which you can't go back to say, we did fifty, now we want to increase it? I mean, there's some political nuance there, but...
No, I don't think so. I mean, there's no regulation that I'm aware of that would stop us from going back at a, you know, even the subsequent town meeting. It does take a long time for it to get through the legislature, so... So sort of, it would take probably a couple of town meetings before it was even, it could take a couple of town meetings before it's even in place, and then you would have the experience with it. So it just depends on how long it takes. I mean...
So to that point, then, if this is for fall town meeting, is it realistic that the home rule petition would be in place for annual?
I think that we would let our, when we send it, when we send the petition, we always ask our legislatures to help push it through, and I think that we would, I think they would understand and we would communicate the urgency in terms of trying to get it in place.
There's no guarantee, but, yeah.
Yeah, but certainly, we would be at the will of the legislature.
Okay. Gentlemen in the back in the green, do you have a question or clarifying?
Quick comment.
Yep, come on up.
Mark Siegel, sixteen Westminster Way. I would humbly suggest that the audience here is very unique in understanding the nuances between special town meeting and annual town meeting, but the majority of people in the town do not. And that would just be a nuance that would be lost to them in terms of the difference of fifty versus a hundred, et cetera, et cetera.
Understood. Thank you. Ms. Spring, did you have a, did you want to add anything? Okay, he covered it. Okay.
I'll just share, Chris, Christie, I looked up Weston's, or Shelby, I looked up Weston's bill that passed. It was submitted and referred to the committee at the state legislature on August third of two thousand seventeen, and it finished the process February twenty-second of two thousand eighteen. So it took approximately, you know, six months to get through the whole process.
Oh, one other, pardon me, one other comment. I don't know if this came up earlier either. The vote in Weston to raise the signatures to fifty was a citizen's petition.
How many signatures does that represent? Okay, seeing no other hands or interest in coming before us and, I think, our comments? Okay, all right. We're good?
Did you want a motion to adjourn?
I was just going to thank them.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Yes, please.
Yeah, no, I sincerely want to thank everyone. I want to thank those who sent in written comments. This is still something, obviously, very much before the board. It will come before finance committee. And so the public is always welcome to come to open forum. That's typically at the start of our meeting. So if you didn't have a chance to come tonight and you do want to come and share your views, we always welcome that. And you can always email us at selectboard@westburrowma.gov. And so I want to thank the many members here before the public, of the public, excuse me, for coming tonight. Very much appreciate your participation. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Westboro TV, as always.